You can't really give a fuck about what people say no more. Cause everybody gonna fucking critique everything that you do, no matter what you do. That shit will creep into your mind, no matter if you believe it or not.
It's wasted energy.
Yeah, it's wasted energy.
What up world? Live on there with Mr. Be Great today Lamar King Senior. Glad you tapped in with me. Got another amazing show for y'all tonight. Got my brother, Baldwin County Commissioner, Mr. Kendrick Butts. Y'all welcome him to the show. Glad to have you, Mr. Butts.
Thank you, thank you. Glad to be here.
Yeah, man, I give everybody an opportunity to, you know, to introduce themselves. Tell them a little bit about yourself, where you're from, all that good stuff.
My name is Kendrick Butts. I'm from Baldwin County, a lifelong citizen here, been here all my life. Went through the same struggle, me and you, you know, we talk about this all the time, the struggle we born, a product of the body project, Millersville Manor, Dory County, and I decided to run for office so I can be a significant change in my community. Trying to continue the legacy, see that the people that came before me and what they doing and try to change their mindset and the hearts of the individuals in our community. Educate them, be transparent on things that we see going in our community.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I met you, like, like, man, you were talking before I met you as a young, uh, a young guy, you was, uh, until the real estate industry, you hired my company. Gave me a chance to hire a company, I was developing myself, it became friends and, uh, with you. And I knew your family and your, and your mother all my life, they stayed across the street from us, so.
No doubt.
Know your dad very well, know your dad very well, your family very well, I know you come from good people. Working together, hopefully we can work together, me and you, me and this guy, we don't see eye to eye on a lot of things, nobody know I love him as a brother.
That right.
One day I'm gonna make him put that donkey on, he gonna put that donkey on, he gonna come back to your side one of these days.
I hear you, brother, I hear you. But yeah, man, you know, you know, again, man, you know, I got a lot of respect for you, man, I, I.
Like what?
I'm, you know, proud to see where you are, the things you're doing within the community of Baldwin County, you know, you know, my old district and things like that, man, I'm definitely hats off to you, Mr. Butts, man, you've been a, you're a great influence in the community, you keep on doing what you're doing. So we're gonna jump right on in this interview, man, I wanna ask you, man, you know, I, you know, I'm pretty sure the listeners and myself, wanna know what really got you into politics, man, what, you know, what drove you to, you know, to take that route?
A lot of people that knew me know the three things that I always love, what people always say they don't like to talk about. Maybe it's, uh, finance, religion, God, cause I love all religions, as long as it's a religion that gonna better the people. Uh, finances and politics and even sports, I love, I always loved the sport too. The dynamics of it changed in the way it is now though, but those are the things, you know, that I, that I love to do and people that really, really know me, that know I always been, but due to raising my kids. I'm an electrical contractor, electrical electrician, always traveled all over, all over doing electrical work, cause it was an opportunity for me in Baldwin County to be electrician when I went to school, I worked at, got out in Marine Corps. Uh, in eighty, eighty-eight, became a correction officer, found out that is not a career path that I wanted to do, was nothing was wrong with it, but I start, uh, getting a family and I started asking things that I wanna do to help my career. Put my family and kids in a better situation, so that's when I started going to electrical school, so it allowed me to travel all over. Now my kids are grown on their own, so I'm able to, I'm able to do the things that I, I wanted and always loved to do. Anybody that know me know I love politics, know I love God, know I love financial, so. That's how I end up, that's how I end up being at, you know?
Got you, and you know, I, I get it, especially, you know, coming up, you know, in the era that you did, seeing a lot of, excuse me, a lot of different things, different changes throughout, especially in the black community. And, you know, for the most part, we've really never had a voice, you know, you know, at the courthouse or at city hall, you know what I mean? And, you know, here in the latter years of our lives or whatever, my life, you know, we, we seeing more people of color, you know, in the political space, you know, making, you know, an effort to, you know, make change within the community. And, 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 and with being a young politician, you know, I mean, being a rookie, as I would say, you know, this is your first, first political run, right? Like, what are some of the, you know, the hardest challenges that you had, you know, when you got into it, being new, not knowing the process? What were some of the most, you know, difficult tasks you had to overcome, you know, to be a county commissioner in Baldwin County?
I feel like I'm an alpha male, so I try to demand a room when I walk in, and so I had to become more of a listener. Take the knowledge that around me from a lot of mentors around the board, work with people from the Republican GOP side. And the things I'm seeing in the news, it's hard for me to do that sometimes.
Yeah.
When you support a base like that, I listen to people like you, giving me different perspectives on life and saying, hey, this might be the way, hey, this is how it gonna be, that's what I say, man, you talk like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just being a great listener, just seek, the listening person to understand before you speak, you gotta become a great listener when you, cause you're serving other people. You have to really, and sometime I done had some knockout with them, then I had to call them back and say, sir, I didn't mean no harm. The day my day was kinda hectic, cause I get, I'm available to the public anytime, if at twelve o'clock at night, three o'clock in the morning called me, cause I get up and start my day off at three thirty, that's the entrepreneur spirit that I always had, I always had to work and travel, two, three hours from home, leave home at two o'clock, get back twelve hours later. There's no problem with me like that, my sleek habits. So I'm up all the time researching, doing that, so one of the greatest thing I said to be a great, to be a great listener, really listen to the people and being a product of the district that I serve all my life.
Yeah.
I understand the pain and struggle they go through, my mother watched them do that, so I see things that I don't think it should be this way.
Got you.
So for some reason, we gotta change our hearts and our mindset and make our community, cause I believe in freedom ain't free, you gotta fight for it.
Definitely.
You know, not one step backward, you gotta fight every day to go forward and make your community better.
Yeah.
That's what I think my passion and my last goal in this life, that's what I think it's gonna be, that, that's what I know, ain't no thing, that's what I know, God, that blessed me with it. Do everything I can when I leave this world and make this world better than I came in and make it be a better place for my great grandchildren, grandchildren behind me.
Yeah, and I know it's a challenge, you know, you know, for any politician, because, uh, you know, I, I did a show, you know, a few weeks back called Politrix. You know, that's what I call, I, I call it Politrix, because it's, it's almost, you know, coming from my, you know, my standpoint as a regular citizen, someone who's, you know, not yet, because you inspire me, you never know, I, I, I may be a politician out here in Harris County somewhere, I ain't no telling, so. But, you know, you know, what, you know, just, you know, being that, you know, you gotta be either Democrat, Republican, or independent. And, you know, for me, from my standpoint, it's almost like where it's always gonna be a fighting battle between the parties. It's always gonna be, you know, where my side is right and your side is wrong, or your side is right, you know, you gotta pick a side. How do you, you know, throughout the whole, even, you know, on the local level, cause I feel like local politics are the most important ones, because that's the one that affect you the most, you know, personally. But, you know, what, how is it navigating between the parties and trying to, you know, agree to disagree and come on common ground for the, you know, the public, you know? How difficult is that and what are the frustrations, you know what I mean, that, you know, either you or even the other side? That y'all kind of, you know, bump heads on and not agree on, how do you guys work through that the most to, you know, to benefit the public? That's, that's my question for you.
Well, the makeup of my board is, the most of the people on my board is like sixty-five and above, seventy-eight. I'm fifty, I'm fifty, I'll be fifty-six in October, so. Like I said, I had an opportunity through my military career, through my business career, to travel from all aspects, from the richest neighborhoods to some of the poorest neighborhoods. I'd have seen the dynamics of both, you know, things that I do, I like I said, I love to read and research, so. It, it's hard with it, with the media, and that's why I told you, I talked with you the other day, said I got off Facebook, trying to get my mind clear and get back, because it's so much toxic stuff on the social media and internet now, that it'll take you away from things that really true to your heart and what you believe in. I'm trying to get more back into the things, I, I love paper, the field of paper, I love to read. I see your book collections and what you got, I can sometimes go and get people books collection. But it's tough, it's tough with the, with the day and age of the, of the media. And then we in election season right now, but you gotta understand, just sit across from a man, look him in his eyes and ask him and say, hey, this is how, this is what I believe in. Cause me being a younger guy, I know they try to tell me things that, if, if it's not with my soul and spirit, if I make a decision that can't go, I'm not gonna make a decision that gonna make me go home and I can't go to sleep at night.
Yeah.
Since I've been in, one decision I made like that, and I called all the board members, said, I didn't feel comfortable with it, but I never do it again. So, you know, you gotta be true to yourself and what you believe in, your DNA, what you stand for, what you live on, and say what you mean and mean what you say. Now, again, I say I'm a product of my community, I would never, ever do anything to hurt anyone in my community intentionally. Like you say, it's Politrix.
Yeah.
A lot of things can be revealed to you that you never knew.
Yeah.
That you knew, but then when you research, that's why I try to, before I make a decision, get all the meetings material, read it carefully, research it, so I can get a sound, good decision when I make that decision behind that podium. I'm accessible to all the public, I love when the public inter, inter, interact me and talk with me and ask me courses, tough course and good course and compliment, criticize, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's a battle, it'll, it's a battle, and hopefully we can get people into politics and get rid of this toxic environment we got. People like you that understand that, hey, you know, I talk with a lot of young people, they say, don't go vote. I can't, and like, my granddaddy was born thirty-six years after slavery ended. Land I live on today is land that here quiet night, at twenty-five years old fought in World War I, so. I'd have heard all these folks, my grandmother died in ninety-three, so a lot of, a lot of kids, they don't have that foundation and that structure that we have.
Yeah.
And then they been seeing a lot of things, and I don't have all the answers to what going on in society, only thing I know, I gotta do what's right for the people, what I believe is right, the best that I know in my knowledge and in my heart and do, keep God first. Try to get us an opportunity where all of us can come out in the public and do this. I love local government, people say, hey, you need to, no, I don't do that, I don't care none about that, I love the local government.
Yeah.
Love talking with people like you, I try to get in many events I can, but I stay gone a lot with, uh, different events and different conferences and stuff, but whenever I can go to a local event, I wanna go, I wanna engage the people, I wanna let them know that, hey, you can be anything you wanna be. And one, and then I'm gonna set up after I say this, one of the things I'm trying to start is a junior commission board. Define the next Colin P. Lee, Kendrick Butts, uh, Tyree O'Keefe. Find the next one, we lost contact with civic one-on-one, so we need to teach kids what civic one-on-one and three forms of government, and how important they are in our society and what you need to do. So that, that's one of my things.
Definitely, definitely, and I, you know, and I, and again, you, you, you hit some points that really, you know, resonates with me as far as like, you know, like you said, most of the people that you work with, within the county commissioner in, at the Baldwin County courthouse, they are of older stature, you know, you got people sixty-five plus, you know, seventy, and I think that's the narrative that is pretty much runs this country, cause in my opinion, even when you go to the, the national level, the federal government, you got people that are two, three times my age, you know, with, and putting things in place that's gonna affect me longer after they gone. And I think, and I think that's where you say, you know, having that junior board and having younger people in place, because we're the one that's gonna have to live this life, your grandkids, your great-grandkids, the things that you're putting in place, they're the ones that gonna have to pretty much live that life, and that's why I think the importance of young people get into politics, because we're the one that have to live this, and I think sometimes that we can get kind of far in between our ideologies, because we're from two, three generations apart, you see what I'm saying, like, like, it's kind of, the ideology can be so different that it affects the people that are younger and, and, and we don't see eye, everybody's not alike, but we gotta put things and put mechanism, mechanisms in place, so we can make sure we won't have that big lapse in age and big lapse in ideologies that people suffer, because it is, they, everyday things change. So what are some of the things that you would say that, that, that can, someone in the community or someone in your district can get more involved in the political process, you know, within Baldwin County, and how they can understand how things works and how can they get a better knowledge of what it is, and sometimes you go down into the means and they're talking in, they're talking in, you know, another language sometimes seems like it. So what are some of the things that people in your district and people within the local community can get involved, so they can get a better knowledge of what happens at the courthouse?
Well, I think what they need to do is just educate theyself, go to the meetings. And before I became a commissioner, I promise you, I would never went to no meeting, when I started to run, I said I needed, so I understand people working, they got dynamic, but we living in some difficult times that you cannot afford to be uninformed and not understand what going on. You think it's not gonna hurt you, but when your taxes going up, or when your kid's been with prosecutors and everything, and you just gotta, you just gotta keep getting the information out there. Whoever wanna levitate to it, elevate it for me, they are doing, you're not, you can't say the word. I came in the Marine Corps, they say ten percent of you ain't gonna make it, you go to war, you go to boot camp, it's just gonna be derelict, gonna be ten percent of the population, you gave everybody a million dollars in this population, in one year, probably ten percent of us will be broke. So you gotta understand, this comes from giving you the information knowing right from wrong and just getting involved, and everybody don't want the same environment level. And I understand that, because we dealing with millennia, X generation, Z generation, whatever generation I came from, I don't.
Baby boomers, you're, you're a baby.
No, I wasn't a baby, but my mom, but whatever generation, it depends generation in the world, I mean, so I can't relate to the younger generation now.
Yeah, and it'd be like that, it'd be like that, and even, even from my stature, and I'm saying, I can relate on some levels, but then some levels I can't, and even for the people that's younger than me, you know, I got, I got, you know, I got son twenty-two years old, and sometimes I, some of his ideology is so far in between, we're only twenty years apart, so you just imagine someone who's forty or fifty years older than me, you know, you know, putting mechanisms in place that, that I think is right, and it, and that's why I think we gotta have an influx of the youth. And you talked about Lexington, Kentucky, I was looking at some stuff that happened.
Not Lexington, Lexington, Mississippi.
Lexington, Mississippi, but I was looking at something that's in, um, what is that, in Louisiana, Gary Chain, Gary Chambers is going something, check him out, go, go look him up. He's going through some things that he got nominated to be put on the ballot, but their chair ruled not put him on the, Gary Chambers is a, they would call him a controversy, maybe even, you know, a little bit radical, whatever, I, I don't know him personally, don't know his full story, but I know he's trying to put some, do some things that are outside the norm, and they got some people that are in place that are even blocking his nomination to be on the ballot in November, and, and, and it goes on, and that's why the importance of going to the meetings, learning the political process, training our youth on what it, you know, that local politics, they matter, they matter more, more so than, you know, everybody went to vote, uh, two years ago during the presidential election, but then when you come down to, to local election, the number drops significantly, people don't go to the polls when it comes for city council and county commissioners and judges and prosecutors, like, you know, and that's, that's what's gonna affect you on a day-to-day basis, and I, and I get it, I, I get it, man, it, it's, it's, it's real. So, you know, what is, what is, you know, what is it like, you know, in the day-to-day operation, what, what does a county commissioner do, cause, you know, we, 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 we know, we know y'all have the means, we know y'all, you know? What is the day-to-day life and what is the job description of a county commissioner, and what do y'all exactly do, cause I still don't know, and I'm, I'm in my fort, so tell me.
Thank you for asking that, very, very important, of course, basically what we do, we're gonna set ordinance, we're gonna set regulations for the county, we're gonna manage the tax. I just, matter of fact, I just got certified to become a commissioner, we had like nine classes I had to do, and then I had to go to a leadership, leadership class. You gotta work with people all across the state, on the local, state level, federal level, you gotta understand the, a lot, and, and a lot of things that I said I could do, I'm finding out, legally I can't even do it. You set budgets for each, Baldwin County got about eighteen departments, you set budgets for those departments, we wanna make sure we got proper water, we wanna make sure our public service is good with, we gotta read the, uh, the tax digest, make sure we're within the state law, within regulation, but we got people that are gonna let us know this, and, and it's more important, if you're not on top of it, you're gonna have to be that, you're gonna have to understand your budget, comprehensive plans, you got comprehensive plans, strategy plans that you gotta read, and that's kind of what you wanna see the city look like in the next five to ten years, you trying to generate and bring business here, you trying to educate people to get them to, utilize the central Georgia tax, so when businesses do wanna come here, and we got the manpower to fill those places, you got to engage the community, make sure the roads, cause, cause back in the day, we used to be a road and tax revenue, what they used to call commissioners, that's all we did with roads and tax. But now you doing the priority of things, making sure the budget is set, making sure you got proper water, public safety, making sure, uh, if they not living within the budget, cause I'm responsible for the taxpayer's money. And I try to be conservative with that and make sure, Baldwin County and my district, tax dollar, uh, number one being utilized equally, equally across the board, and make sure it been utilized in the best, so tax, cause I, I, I don't like, I don't like that word, tax raises though, but sometime you have to raise taxes to get the things you want. It's a lot of areas, we've been neglected in my area, so I'm fighting every day to try to get our area, looking like it was when I grew up, when I grew up, so. And basically what we do, we make sure your taxes are being utilized the best it can, make sure the department, the budget, by the state of Georgia constitution, we have to have a balanced budget every year. So we gotta do things, we gotta have a tan note, the tan is a tax anticipation note where you borrowing money, you can't meet to, it's like when the COVID came, till they came out with the money. We gotta, we can't let the county not run, we cannot not pay the police, we cannot pay the firemen, we cannot get the roads where they get bad, a bridge go bad, so a lot of times, you start, you know, your tan note off at a certain amount, you try to use less of it can, that you can, and those are some of the things that I'm learning. Splash, allow us on, you know what, you know, special purpose, uh, optional, local sale taxes, T splash, E splash, a full splash, you got different things you have to do, so. That's why I say go to the website, it's there, make the numbers come up, you should get the best informant that you want, and all. As a matter of fact, if you don't mind, I'll plug, it's called Baldwin County GA dot com website, you can put, you can go there, you can put, uh, any complaints you have, any community, any concerns, I don't like to say complaint, any concerns you have in the community, you can go there and apply for them, you can apply for a chart, you can know who, who, over every department, so that's a very informative website that people can go on, and again, it's Baldwin County GA dot com. They'll tell you all you need to know about your county and city, you can learn a lot.
Got you, got you, so you, I know you mentioned the, the county manager, and, you know, you know, from my eyes, you know, and I seen it, you know, even on the city side, they have a city manager. County manager, do they have any power, or they like, cause I, you know, from, you know, coming up in Baldwin County, I remember, you know, the historic race of, you know, Mayor Floyd Griffin, when he first got in office, and I remember, and, 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 you know, even as a, and I was a young, I was probably early voting age, that's like one of the first elections I voted in, and I was probably like eighteen years old. But I remember him coming in office and the city of Millersville had never had a city manager until he got in office, and it almost looked like to me, they pulled some power away from him and put it in the city manager's hand, I was wondering, does the county manager have more power, like, you know, I, I don't really know the dynamic of those city and county managers, what are, what, what is their job to do, you know, why do we need, why is that office even, why is that even a position, is, is my question.
We up on the, uh, county manager, county manager form of government, where he run the daily operations of the county. The employees and the head, heads of the department answer to him, he answer to us, we got, uh, handbook states, our policies and everything. He's there to regulate, make sure the policy that the commissioner set are being followed, are being followed, that's his main job is to run our county, run our county, when I say I, I'm talking about everybody that's a citizen of Baldwin County, make sure our county being officially ran based on the policies and the parameters that the commissioner board had set, and his job to answer, of course, and his job is to run the daily operation of the county, of the eighteen department we have, based on the ordinance and the things that the commission have voted on, and, and the policies that we have in place. His department answer to him and he answer to the commissioner board, all five of us.
Got you, got you, so, so he, he really has no quote-unquote power, he's just a regular, he's like a mediator to the citizens, right? Like, he just makes sure everybody acting in accordance, or enforcement, y'all say, okay.
He should be biased to all, and he, he's a good, he's a good kind of man, a lot of, a lot of people say things, but I don't get into that, you know, he answer my calls, whether it be three o'clock in the morning, and I try not to bother him on the weekends and on his off time, cause he got a family life and I gotta, he know if I call him on the weekend or after, I'll be something serious.
Yeah.
It's gonna be something that one of my constituents that called me about, you know, you know, you know my parameter, certain things I won't tolerate, one, number one, racism, number one, not having good water, not having sewage on the ground, I'm not gonna tolerate, uh, inadequate quality of life and racism one hundred and ten percent, I never tolerate that, and you know.
But that's not, that's not an elected position, that, that, that's, that's, the county hires that person, right?
Right, right, the commissioner board wants to vote and say when they wanna hire, and he was hired four years before I got there.
Well, yeah, that's, that is, cause I was just, I never really understood, cause, you know, like I say, I remember them bringing in a county manager, and it kind of, you know, you know, that's just me thinking as a constituent and saying, well, why they need a county manager when, oh, they need a city manager, when you got the mayor and you got the commissioners, like, what was that place, but I see now you cleared that up in an assist to say that he pretty much works with them, like, he, he works with you, I got you, got you, got you.
Well, to be honest with you, you know, when, uh, when, uh, Mr. Griffin got in office, we had Mr. Baldwin there for years and years, and you know the situation with him and everything went on. You ain't the only one thinking like you thinking, I thought of it. Why are you bringing, you know, why you gonna change the charter, why you gonna change the charter with, uh, Mr. Griffin, the first American in America, so that's it, that's that human nature and nature, you didn't think that.
Yeah, you didn't think that, and I think it was a hundred and one.
You ain't the only one thought like that.
It was a hundred and one years, it was a hundred and one years you had been operating with the mayor having, having, having power like that, and then soon as he came in, they changed it to city manager, I, you know, me as, you know, and I was living in the city of Millersville at the time, I felt some type of way, you know, I, I, and then that just being honest, and that's why, you know, that's why it's very important, I still, guess what, I still had no idea about the political process, I had no, uh, you know, no urge to even try to go, try to run, not even knowing that I probably could have put my, go run, and I think that's what, you know, the community need to do, like, to, you know, take a, you know, a page out of your book, like, if you wanna be, you know, if you wanna be a part of the solution, be the solution, go down there, put your name on the ballot, do, make the steps you have to do, and it's not that hard to do from, from, they're gonna, you're gonna learn your way, all you gotta do is get down there and get involved and, and go to the means, even if you don't wanna be in the political space, even if you don't wanna be in the forefront, but you can go down there and get involved and, and, and do the, different things and, and make your voice be known uh, throughout the whole, you know, political process, I get it.
And to piggyback on what you just said, I have a lot of people telling me like, they should run, they split the vote, I would never, ever tell an individual not to run for office, because I'm okay with somebody running against me every time election come up, if I decide to run again, because the office should stay true to the people, that's not a cliche with me. I believe in it, I live about it, the people decide, what do they want, Kendrick, they keep Kendrick, fire Kendrick, and I'm okay. I would not be mad when anybody, my four years is up, but that office should be true to the people.
Yeah.
We work for the people, we serve the people, you don't have a servant heart, stay out of, cause I promise you, the money ain't, you ain't gonna make no money, I ain't doing it for the money.
Yeah.
If you don't have a servant heart and you don't have a, a listening ear to understand and be connected with your community, your job ain't for you, it's not for you, so you gotta understand too that, and you can't be thin-skinned, I'm okay with positive criticism, negative criticism, only thing I ask you to be, meet me on respect and we depart on respect. I would never do anything to you to harm you, we'll say how we gotta say, and we'll leave it like that and it change your mind, and I ain't gonna go no two hours which trying to change your mind, I call you.
Yeah, pretty much everybody got their mind, their mind set up and how they wanna be, but like, again, you say, respect goes a long way, you know, and, and I think, and just like you saying, I can, even with, you know, you leaving Facebook, because like you say, that, you know, reading certain stuff and that, you know, me, you know me, I'm Mr. Be Great Today, I, I stopped watching the news, I don't, I don't get in, I don't even watch the news anymore, because people like, well, you don't know what's going on in the world, that, that's not true, because if something hap, if something happens big enough that I need to know, trust me, my mom and my daddy gonna call me, my sister, my brother, somebody gonna call me, somebody gonna call my wife, I'm gonna figure out what's going on that I need to know going on, and the news sometimes will sway you depending on what network you watch, you know what I mean, depend, you know, but with Facebook, you get it all, see, the Facebook, you know, you can, and then you get yourself caught up in trying to defend your view on this keyboard, you know what I mean, and then like you said, you get caught up and you get caught up in. Exactly, it's taking away from exactly what you wanna do as a, as a county commissioner, cause you'll get caught up in getting, you're putting your personal views sometime, get emotional, you get upset on based on what somebody might say or what somebody might post, and, and a person in your position, sometimes you definitely don't need that distraction that's gonna make you bias in situations, cause you might read something on Facebook, then you got a county commissioner meeting tonight, and now you feeling some type of way from this morning, cause you saw somebody say something about whomever, you know what I mean, and it be like that, and, and, and that's what, we go through that, you know, we human beings, we're not robots, we, sometimes we can't, we can't put the blinders on, cause we see it, you know what I mean, but, you know, I mean, you have to do what you gotta do to make sure you make your life easier, make your job easier, well, you're not biased or getting caught up in this whole, you know, right versus left, and, and when it's all about the people of your district, it's all about the people of Baldwin County, it's not about, you know, whether you're a Democrat or Republican, in my eyes, it's about, hey, you in this county, we gotta make sure we take care, you know what I mean? But, uh, we gotta pay a few bills, uh, Mr. Butts, and, um, we'll be right back with y'all in thirty seconds, y'all be good.
Okay.
Looking for money so you can improve your existing businesses? Open another business? Or working capital loan for businesses of all sizes? We here at Ten Funding Group are here for you. We strive to bring affordable finances to businesses of all sizes throughout the United States. Our underwriting process is specifically designed to be simple and quick. We can get any business funded in as little as twenty-four hours, as opposed to the usual two to four month underwriting period you come to expect from traditional banks. Only you know what your business needs to grow and succeed, we're just here to help. Please contact Voight College at seven one three eight seven zero six five five three, be great today, peace.
All right, we back, uh, live on that with Mr. Be Great Today Lamar King Senior. Got Baldwin County Commissioner Kendrick Butts on the show with us today, man, uh, we gonna jump right back in. Mr. Butts, so, you know, what can your constituents, you know, expect to see going on in your district, you know, in the next, you know, next coming years?
Right now, one of my pet project is that Arden Circle in Irkfield, landfill over there, where we have illegal dumping over there, so hopefully in the next month or so, they'll see that cleaned up, and we'll turn that, it's about seventeen acres of land, hopefully we'll be able to turn that into affordable housing, that's one of the things I'm pushing and doing that, with the get team, I'm, I'm a member of the get team, was it's the, uh, community housing, community housing, actually, we gotta meet Monday, where we trying to do something, they got a four hundred thousand dollar grant, where they trying to. Where they trying to keep people that, uh, a certain age limit, we'll be putting that out after Monday when the get team meet. It's in like three census block and, and four to census, well, four census block, but three of them is in my district and in the Coney Heights area. But what they basically try to do is maintain someone that might can't be able to afford, an older person sixty-two or more, but they gotta be owner occupied. They'll come in and renovate their property up there about fifty, sixty thousand dollars apiece and keep them instill the community. So hopefully I'll see my community, uh, change. And we trying to get sidewalks and area lighting. We gonna try to, uh, do that property though, they'll offer on in, in Irk. Uh, we got a splotch coming up. If it pass, even if it don't pass, what's gonna be up to the public? We gotta still come up with comprehensive plans and try to make that district better. So hopefully they'll see that. We got a lot of area at Collin P Lee Center where Senator Oskoff earmarked like one point eight million dollar. We got about a hundred thousand dollar match from the county. And it's gonna be amazing place over there, but, uh, it's already nice over there, but they gonna do renovate the whole with library. Keep the Collin P Lee Center. It's gonna be real nice.
The old Hasburg School.
Right, old Hasburg School, with the auditorium, where the auditorium, the kitchen wall. But that's, that's one other project I hopefully see. I'm, I'm constantly working on trying to get sidewalks and a walking tree on down Ellinmore Drive. Hopefully we can, hopefully we can, uh, do something with this Sibley and Smith property that they paid four point six million dollar before I was in office. And that's one of the deals I tell them, I, I would have never agreed to that though, but we got it now, so it's on the county. So hopefully we can bring our industry in and do that. It's about, I think it might be about a thousand acres of land trying to bring some industry in. But that's some other thing, hopefully we can bring our industry bank through the, um, fall line freeway. They got a, we got a collective thing with Wickerson County and Baldwin County, got the urban development council. They trying to develop that property out there. We in the process of trying to bring the state down and get them to do some things with central state out there through the central state development. That's not in my district though, but hopefully that'll be bringing the city. One of the things I'm trying to put on the splotch, cause I was, I had the opportunity to go to Stark Bridge, the amphitheater. I was up there at the amphitheater. Uh, hopefully we can get an amphitheater out at the state through this splotch. I think that'll be a great an enemy to the, to Baldwin County, had a community to come out and be exposed to different bands from country to rock, to hip hop, uh, to any genre out there with safety and doing that. So that's some of the things that I'm trying to work with the central state redevelopment board, the Walter Reynolds. The city, maybe we can do a joint event and do that through the splotch, splotch agreement.
You know, that would be nice for the city. I, I definitely, you know, I, I've been to many amphitheaters, you know, whether it be in Atlanta, you know, uh, Raleigh, North Carolina. And they're definitely a beautiful asset to the community because it, you know, it brings, it brings people together. Cause one thing music can do, music can bring, you know, any type of event, community event, whether it be bringing awareness, you know, just having a good time. Like there's, there's nothing wrong with having a good time. And that's what we wanna do, you know, throughout the community and it's.
That's one of the things he telling me about, uh, what were they trying to do out there? I'm trying to do a joint venture with Baldwin County and do that. So stay tuned for that. Cause I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to learn to do that. My goal is to have industries out there.
Yeah.
To have people out there with business and get down. And that's what I'm trying to prepare the people in my district now. Go to the, you know, I'm a product of Central Georgia too. And your dad went through it, when I went back trying to get my HVAC man, that's where. I always knew your daddy, but we talked all the time in the class and he was going at that time. Then I ended up going there. I ended up, I ended up getting a contract to go over to Iraq. So I ended up had to cut my classes off though, but that's where, that's where we used to talk about a lot of things and in the community with different things. So, so we trying to bring industry here, but they gonna look at a lot of things, the water, the sewage, the access to the major highways, they gonna look at the education level, the identities in the community. Nobody wanna bring a Fortune five hundred company to a area that, you know, say, your crime is high. We have nothing to do for the people that gonna work there. They're making seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, it's gonna be the most highly technical educated people, so.
It's gonna be hard.
We trying to do that, trying to educate the people, get ready. Cause progress is coming. You can't hold it. They not making any more land, twenty-three thousand plus eight hundred and something. Uh, cause comforts of the world, ain't no more land being made. They did it in Dubai where they made the palms, made the palms.
That took a lot of, you know, that took a lot, but I tell you, and I tell people often, you know, you know, moving out here to Houston, people, you know, even people here, even when I moved to Raleigh, North Carolina, people are, oh, the traffic so bad, the traffic so bad. But we all know, we been in Atlanta, Atlanta, and it's the thing about, the thing about Atlanta is the highway is not big enough. And even throughout the whole state of Georgia, throughout the whole state of Georgia, you only got about four or five interstates. That's it. You got I twenty, seventy-five, eighty-five and ninety-five. Like that's it. You know, and that, and I think, and the rest of it is, you know, wooded area, like outside of the city, not outside of the metropolitan cities. You don't see too many, you gotta drive so far to even get to the interstate, in most cases throughout Georgia. And I think the fall line freeway coming through Millersville is a big thing because the highway is where the, the commerce come from. You're like, you gotta have, you gotta be able to get the trucks through there. You gotta be able to get people to navigate through there. But they ain't gotta go down there through the whole town. Just think about when you driving through Monticello. Like big companies not gonna come through there and they gotta go down there and go around the square. And in most cases throughout Georgia, there's not a lot of highways. And that's why you have the traffic problem in Atlanta, because even the highway they have in Atlanta is not as big as Texas. Now Texas out here, man, it's a, the highways are massive and even there's a lot of volume. The traffic moves because they got abundance. You don't even have to, even the turnarounds in Houston. Like when you say you missed your exit, you get off your exit, they got the wraparounds under the bridge to where you don't even have to go through the light, you know, and that kinda keeps the flow. That, that, that keeps the flow of traffic going to, to the point where they don't even have, um, that, you know, you don't have all that congestion because you gotta go to the light, stop, turn, go cross, you know, go cross the bridge, stop at the other light, turn. And it, it's just not big enough. And I think Georgia as a whole doesn't have enough interstate to really bring in those big companies and bring in that big commerce to where it can kinda continue to fuel the economy. Because I, it, it, you gotta be able to move, you gotta be able to move. And you know, I, I hope to see some great things with that fall line freeway. They've done some amazing things. We even used to ride on as kids on, with our bike after they were doing construction.
Right. And, and you know, I like reading, like doing technology, so you got a lot of things that one of the biggest things that I seen like, uh, we should have, no reason, I'd have been to Africa, I'd have been, I never had a chance to go to China. But then in Japan and seeing they railhead, I've been to Europe with the Euro start and how they, how they trains move two hundred, two hundred miles, I'll get you back and forward between there. We gotta be able to, we gotta be able to do innovative things and do, but I, like I say, the prison thing we having right now, we too busy fighting each other on the political scene that we can't, we can't move forward. So we gotta get people in office that understand that in order for America to be called. I'm, I'm going downhill on my, on my life stand, you know, I'm fifty-seven years old. Most people live in my era on my daddy's side, ninety-three on my mother's side, seventy, so eighty, eighty years old. So I know, I know my life is, uh, trending down. So my goal in life, like I stated earlier, for to make the community better for when I left it than when I came in office. But I, I don't know, we gotta get, we gotta get people in office on the local level. We gotta get them in there to do that with innovative ways, we try to find ideas, cause we paying a godly amount of tax money. You being taxed deaf in America, you get your check, fifty percent of it gone and your benefits and then take your tax. And you come out Saturday, gotta pay tax on cars, food, housing.
Dev taxes.
In our check, you might be, you might be at twenty percent of the money you gotta live out of. But if like to that nine percent, keep going up, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, they being. We gotta, we, we gotta find ways to do that. We gotta get back to families living together, better each other, where we can go out and be prosperous in the community and do that, to come up with innovative, a great idea. So I'm looking for the next Tario Key out there to start his own, own, own air, own air thing. So you gotta surround yourself with amazing and great people that trying to elevate each other and do that. So I, I understand, but that's what I work hard for every day trying to, and that's one of the things I just called Mr. Reynolds. That's, he's the chair of the central state, trying to get involved in his thing and see, hey, I need to understand what it. Cause right now I can't answer you what they doing out there. And I don't like not be able to answer you. So when we talk again, I'm gonna be able to tell you, cause I just talked with him this weekend. He said he gonna send me the information where they gonna have their next meeting. And I will be asking him that question, but you act.
It's, it's, it's definitely, man, you know, and, and like you saying, I think in my, you know, personal opinion that the younger people, we, and myself included, we gotta get more involved. And I think a lot of times, even some of our, even some of our best minds have been through some scenarios and situations where they're not so proud of. And so, you know, of course, how they play, you know, this game called politics. You know, sometimes people be afraid of what they've done in the past, that they won't jump out there and put themselves in the forefront and say, hey, I wanna be it. Because if you've been through a lot of adversity, you know how to overcome a lot of adversity. And I think those people can be a better, you know, tool in, in, in the political space. And even I was, as I was doing some research and getting ready to, you know, have this wonderful interview with you. You know, I found out that even, you know, people with even convicted felons, you know, through the, through, through the, uh, the restoration of civil and political rights, it restores a person's rights who lost it on, especially in the state of Georgia upon conviction. And that, and that includes the right to run for office. So even people who have, even people who have had a not so, you know, spotty clean background and you made some mistakes early on in life, right? You can go and restore your rights to run for political office because the local politics run your day to day life. You know, local politics, in my, you know, humble opinion, are far more important than even the national election. Like who is in the White House is not more important than who's at the courthouse. Because that courthouse is where you pay your county taxes, right? That's where you go get your tag and that's where you, you know, all, you know, property taxes, like all that stuff.
Everything.
Yeah, all that stuff, you know, how you, you know, how, how, how much money is, 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 is distributed to your children's school system? Like all this stuff plays a role as a part of who you are on day to day basis. Now, we understand that who's in the White House and who's up on Capitol Hill, all that stuff, it matters. It does. I'm not taking away from it, but the most immediate, the most immediate thing that affects you personally is who is at your local courthouse and who's at your local city hall. Like that, that outweighs the national, and, and my, my point for making, for stating that is that we go out in numbers, when it's every four years for the president. We go out in numbers and well, I'm voting for my party and this, that and the third. But you didn't, you have some, you know, in so many cases, especially on, on the local level, you have people in office for thirty, forty, fifty years with no one else on the ballot. You know, no one else even running up against them. So it just, you know, that, that sure win, you know, even from down to solicitor general, you know, even sheriff, you know, uh, police chief, all that stuff, it makes a difference, people. And if we're not more involved in our local elections, per se, more than we are in our national election, we're, we're kinda putting ourselves back.
I agree with you one hundred percent. And you saying it to the crown, that one, I appreciate it all the time. You know, I'm out, I'm out involved into the get out and vote movement, that black voter movement, uh, volunteer cooking, taking people to the polls, you know. You know, you talk with young kids and now they say, what it gonna matter? What they gonna do? I don't know what they gonna do, but I tell you what it ain't gonna do if you don't vote and get the wrong person in there.
Yeah, you're right. You're definitely right. You, you, you gotta be, you gotta be informed on what's going on, you know, whatever, within, within the lifestyle that we live in, you know? And that brings me to my next question is like, you, you, you know, on the ballot, you're a Democratic candidate. You're a Democratic, on the, on the, on the Democratic side of the ballot, right? Are there any, you know, scenarios where you've been in a situation where it was somebody from across the aisle and they had an idea or they had a motion or whatever, you know, the whole process, whatever, you know, that they brought up? And you totally agree with, like, everything they said made complete sense. Has there ever been a time that someone from across the aisle, you'd be like, you know what? I agree with that. And, and, and it's part two of that question is, did you stick with your base based on that? Or did you go with your own individual, you know, I mean, intuition, even though you know you liked it? But you couldn't go against your base because you know it gonna make you look bad for your people?
I'm gonna have to get off video on this, but as you. Yes, I'm gonna tell you, yes, I'm gonna remember, but it wasn't to the point where it gonna affect and it hurt people. It hurt people to like what I'm seeing now, but that ain't no issue, so. And since, and to be honest with you, since I've been in office, I did that one time.
One time.
That one time. And sometimes you have to let people know that. And it, it's a lot of circumstance around it. I don't wanna speak on right now. So you know, like you say, it's politics and politics. Welcome to politics, you know, it get dead on a higher level and a lower level.
Definitely.
Sometimes, sometimes you gotta do that. No, sometimes you gotta pull the big stick out and do that, you know? So, as you of course, and if anybody tell you otherwise, they lying to you. Yes, I have.
Yeah.
But have I been in office? I only did it one time.
Only one time. And see, that's, and see, that's my thing though, Mr. Butts. That's my, that's my, that's my thing about politics, right? Where if it makes sense, like I don't care who it come from, because I'm gonna tell you something. Some of the, some of the most, you know, best information or the best advice or some of the best, you know, stuff that I can use in my life that made me think and say, what? You know what? Came from a person that a lot of people probably had rolled out. Maybe someone who was a stone cold drug addict. And he had, you know, that person had gave me some information and I'd be like, wow. Now, am I gonna listen to that person? But am I gonna ride with that person on everything they say? No, I'm not. But I can, I can, I do have a right, uh, uh, I have a, a, a ability of to, of discernment that if it sounds like, if, if it's something that I can agree with, regardless if I like the person, regardless if I like the party, regardless, I can, I can identify with that thing. Now, does that mean I agree with everything that person says? No, it doesn't. But sometime, even a person that is not all the way right, or a person that is not of your political party that you choose to be of, which is your right, that doesn't mean you have to necessarily go against everything that the other side. Just like you say, it goes like that in politics, cause out of your career, you said it yourself, you only done it once. But, you know, I mean, how many times did you, how many times did you have to go with your base then? Cause like, cause you can't upset your constituents, cause your, cause your constituents voted you into office based on the party line. But then a Republican might say, hey, I got this idea, Mr. Butts, and you be like, you know what? I like that. You know, but I think a lot of times, especially in our community, we're so less informed, we don't even know if the person with, with them or not. How, how do they figure out where you voted at? How they figure out where you standing at? Is there a way we, they can go, is there any type of resource, they can go down and say, well, I wanna see every, every motion he carried and every vote he made on every ordinance put in place? Is that on the website? And can they go find out where they, where they actual person that's representing their district? Can they find out where they lie at on the ballot? Or they, where they lie at on the, on the motions or the meetings or whatever?
And, and they can, and that's one of the things I've been trying to have a minute that we do. They, they just started a, it's called municipal, municipal system. And like up in Atlanta, they got what they'll show it on the, on the screen, show yay or nay and how to vote. Cause I let people inform them how I vote, but we in the process of trying to get a system like that with a public. But you can go onto that Baldwin County, BaldwinCountyGA.com site. And you can pull up the package and it'll tell you the minutes and everything of how we voted and what we voted on. I have no secret how I vote.
It's all public record anyway though, right? It's, it's public record.
Right, right. It's public record, but a lot of people ain't gonna go that extra step and search for it with the open record acts. Everything we vote on and everything we do in public, except executive meetings, and once it come out and be voted on it, it become public records. But when we negotiating in the back, we can't speak on it because it's in a executive meeting. And we got ethics and, and things we gotta go through, cause this might be detrimental too. Individuals, it might be personnel issue, it might be pending lawsuits, pending. So, but once we vote on it, it become public record.
Yeah, it's within the lines of the law.
But it's, it's the regulation that, well, you can say law, regulation by the ACCG, who is the lawyer and represent us and that code. It's a national commissioners all over, all over the United States and ACCG is just locally right here in the state of Georgia. So like I say, it's a lot, you gotta educate yourself, we gotta go to meetings, listen to people doing things. And that's why I told you, one of the reasons I, I wanna spend most of my time being efficient with the people, but to answer your question, I, and also I have voted with, I have voted more times than I have that one time, I have voted with, uh, a Republican across the last. But you know, uh, being in politics, it's a, it's a, it's a form of give and take, compromising. Sometime you can't always be the giver and you can't always be the taker. You gotta balance it out, what best for your constituency and, and what, what it carry.
I got you.
I don't know what to say, they just come with it on the level, you know? We deal with it in a different perspective on the local level, but on the, on the national level, they deal with it in a. You already just seen it, the bill that just came out, fifty Democratic voted for it and fifty Democrat, fifty Republican voted against it. And I'm pretty sure some of the Republicans thought it was a good idea.
And that's how it, and that's how it is, but I think even, I think us as constituents, you know, we need to hold our candidates to the fire. And we, and we need to be more informed, because a lot of times people, the, most people, most people don't know which way they're, they're representative. They don't know where they voted, on where they, you know, they, they're not doing their homework. They're just going in, I think, voting by party, you know, based on just because, you know, you're from a, you know, certain, you know, tax bracket. You know, you're from a, you know, for a certain demographic, you just vote one way. And you never look at the whole political process and what they're doing until November. And then you start looking at ads, you start looking at what they put, you know, people wanna, you know, those splatter campaigns, you wanna say, well, they say, he said this, and what they say, he voted against this. And we're all based on what somebody else is telling us and we're not using the website, in your case, like, you know, BaldwinCounty.GA to go in and say, okay, let's see what Kendrick Butts voted on this. All right, they, they went up on my, you know, military rate, let's see what Kendrick Butts voted at. You know, like, we're not, we're not a part of that political process. We just boldly blindly and holding no politician, you know, yourself included. All, they're, they're not doing the homework to see where, you know, I mean, their votes are going. And I think, and that's my, that's my whole issue with politics, because we just blindly vote and we, and we don't hold their feet to the fire and we don't tell them, say, hey, man, you, you said you were gonna do this or you gonna do this and you gonna, and we don't do it. We, we still make it. And it, I've seen it so many times, because I. We, we still make it and it, I've seen it so many times, because I catch a lot of backlash, because I, I can, I could guess what? I can agree with some stuff Republicans say and I can disagree with some stuff that Democrats say and vice versa, like it goes both ways. I, I, I am not going in the ballot box and voting Democrat all we dying about, I'm just not gonna do that. And a lot of times coming from my community, that, that, that's, that's frowned upon, you know, I mean, that's frowned upon. So what, what do you say about that? So, you know, I mean, is it okay in your opinion? Is it okay for a person who's, you know, in nature, you know, whether it be by involuntary or voluntary, they are Democrat? But is it okay for them to vote for a Republican if they so choose?
I would say it okay, but me being a lifelong Democratic, you know, I put a thing out saying that I don't have time to entertain anyone to try to change their mind, vote what you want. It's just like you say, research, research, candidate, the political environment we are in today. You gotta be solid for my base, what I believe in, what I, I'm a lifelong Democrat, I ain't never voted Republican. I ain't never voted for, I ain't never been one that I want to vote for.
So, so I'm just saying like, and see, I think, again, I think that's what you say, see, that's, that's, see that, I think that's the, the disc. Like you said, you're, you're from a, you're from a generation above and I'm in a, I think in my space that I'm in, or I think a lot of people in my, people who really wanna think about things. Do I necessarily wanna just vote Democrat just because that's what I've always done? Do I wanna hear exactly what the other person might do? Because I, you know, from my point of view, a lot of times the Democratic Party has done some detrimental things to the, to the, especially to the black community. When you think about even our president, for example, that, you know, passed the Clinton crime bill, but it ain't about just that, but it's a lot of different things that come into play that I just can't say I'm just, it's just one way or no way. You know, it's more than one way to skin the cat, Mr. Butts.
Well, well, and, and a lot of things you say that he passed the bill, he didn't pass the bill, the bill went through the house.
Well, he, he, he spearheaded it.
He just signed it because of.
He spearheaded.
Politics is a number, politics is a number game. He's not gonna not sign a bill that he'll get vetoed on. A president don't never wanna go where they signing the bill, they getting vetoed on. He know he, they look at the number from the House of Representatives, the majority whip leader that's in the Senate, they gonna look at it. These people talk, they know, they know how you gonna vote and what you gonna do before you even know it, because they got, they study us, they got research on it, they know the history. And the reason I voted Democratic, cause I ain't never seen a Republican that worried on my vote. My agenda, my, my, my values that I believe in line up with the Democratic Party. It line up with the Democratic Party, the reason, I, I don't go in that line, I'm a researcher. If I don't know you, I'm not even gonna vote for you, we got people running right now, the Democratic Party, I said, what are they at? I don't know nothing about this person. And to be honest with you, I didn't vote for Hillary Clinton when she ran. They told me I helped Trump, I could, they could not vote for her because she banked three countries, Iraq, Syria and Libya. She was a, she, she was not somebody that I wanted to represent, I didn't, I didn't vote for her, I was not even gonna give her my vote, cause I couldn't went to sleep at that night. And I tell you that, well, you helped Trump, they, they were there with me, I'm not gonna vote, I'm not, I don't vote for evil, I don't vote for evil, they say vote for the less of the evil, so, uh, I don't do that.
Yeah, I can, and see, I can dig.
Got it right on my values.
I can dig that and you know, you say you're a lifelong Democrat, but you made a choice that say, well, I'm just not gonna vote for her just because she a Democrat. I'm a, I'm gonna not vote for her because I've done my research and that's my whole thing when it comes down to politics or what I, or what I like to call politics. Is that we just, for the most part, now, and I'm not saying everybody, but for the most part, we just, you know, we go in there, we just go straight down, you know, regardless of who on the ballot. And I think we gotta be more informed of who we are and, and we gotta hold them accountable, that's my thing. We gotta hold these politicians accountable and yourself included, Mr. Butts, I'm.
Yeah, I, I, I agree one hundred percent with you, but the, the status we in today. Trust me, I've been out here in this battle on this field for the last, for the last, when I hear people tell me, I've been in this condition for ten years, I've been in this condition for thirty years. I say, have you ever been to a meeting, have you ever called your commissioner? They called me because they know what I believe in, like I say, I'm a lifelong resident of my district, I'm out there every day speaking over your head for the people, the schools that they go to. So they might feel more comfortable with calling me and the people before me, I can't, I can't say, I don't know, I don't like that. Maybe they wasn't as vocal as I was in being in the community. But I'm, my, my thing is, I never in my life living in Baldwin County or the city of Millersville, I had to call one of my county commanders or county meeting because I made sure my neighborhood was taken care of. So I don't understand why people would live with thirty years of sewage on they, on top of the, of, of ground. I don't understand, because you hear me say all the time, the power is in the people, that's not a cliche, the power is in the people. I promise you where I live at, I've been living here sixteen years, the raw sewage out on that ground, which I gotta separate tank, but if somebody come out there and water running all on the ground, they causing me tax payer money. I'm taking pictures, I'm gonna be down there to meet, why do I have to live like this? Why do I have to have a mosquito infested pond in my front yard and I'm paying taxes? I ain't gonna pay no taxes, when they come to me, I'm saying, we're taking before the E O, E O D board and let those stuff, why should I have to live like this? So why would we allow ourselves to live in a condition for thirty or forty years that we won't even let a dog live in? We gotta understand our power, we don't understand our power in the community. And unity and power we are, we, we, and numbers, our powers and the numbers, and I'm not talking about just blacks and white, I'm talking about just everybody collectively living in the community. We should not have to live in a condition that I'm seeing in my community. If you wanna look at it, we in meetings, man, they telling me when the state and law, the factor of the living, they was getting a hundred and ninety three million dollars of taxes coming into the county. Where's all this money, what did you do with this money? For thirty, forty years, we were collecting a hundred and ninety three of laws, splash and business. We should have way more money than what we got, but it come back, like you say, not holding your politicians responsible. Not putting them up under the fire and coercing them, I ain't got no problem about coercing them. Cause I'm, I think I'm a tax physical guy, I can, I be in meeting with them, say, this makes sense to me, I don't claim to be a CPA, but I'm a businessman and I could not run my business like this. So make, this makes sense to me on my term. And they had to sit down, they had to tell me, I said, that don't make sense, that still don't make sense, but that's the way y'all running, I ain't no wonder we in the condition we in.
And you're totally right, man, that's why you, you know, you know, that's one of the reasons why I brought you on the show and, you know, to bring awareness to people, man. You, you got concerns in your community, go to, go down to your courthouse, go down to your city hall, if you got concerns, you know, within anything and, and you don't necessarily have to wait to things are wrong. Get involved, go to the means when everything is going good, go to the means when, you know, understand the process, so that way when things do occur, you already equipped. People, they, the commissioners, they see you, they know, you know, make yourself aware and like you said, if you pack that county meeting every month or whenever you guys have it, then guess what? They're gonna be, they're gonna be held more, held to a more accountability standard that you are getting something done. Because if you just sitting at home and waiting on November to vote, you, you, you're doing yourself a disservice, you know, I mean. And again, Mr. Butts, I wanna appreciate for bringing you on the show, man, you know, I, I definitely, I'm glad you, you gave some great information, you know, I mean, to, to the show and brought some, I think you, you educated some people today. But any last words you wanna give for the people before you get up out of here, um, anything you wanna say?
Brother, you know how I feel about you, I love you, I love you, you know, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak to the people, hopefully the people that was under the side of my voice, that hopefully they learned something of. Uh, inspire them to get involved in their local politics on the national, we coming up with some difficult times, we gonna have to deal with. America's fundamental link being changed from the top to the bottom, from the bottom to the top. If you don't get involved, hopefully you don't find yourself on the wrong side of the fence, because we got refugees coming here, you know, we've been here all our life. Why we can't prosper, why we can't thrive? So it's a system, synthetic, synthetic that allows us to be held down, but we can't keep making the shoots, we got to get brothers like you, uh, listening to you, you put good information out, I listen to you daily. I like the little snippets that you send me and I listen to it and we gotta just start educating people and changing that next generation hearts and mindset. You know, it's gonna take my grand, my, my grandkids three to nine years old, they gonna have to be the next generation to change and understand. That we gotta be a part of this history, I'd have been all over the world, from the poorest of the rich and neighborhood, one thing you see, people, the people wanna live in harmony. They wanna have economic value, educational value, they wanna do things, we gotta get back to that. You know, my grandmother and grandfather had to walk to school barefooted. Uh, now Bus will pick you up in front of your school, we gotta get back to the three economics educations and being involved in your politics, learn civic one oh one, get some books up, read them. Get familiar, no reason anybody should be a lack of knowledge in this world today with this, this phone right here, you can put in your hand and you can learn anything you wanna learn. You know, so my thing is keep doing what you doing, uh, I support you, anything you need me to do, when I'm out in Texas, I'm gonna stop and have dinner with you and your family. And thank you again for allowing me to come and speak on your platform.
Yeah, man, I appreciate, we, we, it's definitely been a pleasure to have you, Mr. Butts, man, you can, you keep on doing what you're doing. Y'all, y'all make sure y'all go down, y'all support your local, local politician, y'all go down to the meeting, y'all be down, hold, hold Mr. Butts' feet to the five Baldwin County, y'all, y'all hold his feet.
Please do.
You know.
My number, and by the way, my number is four seven eight two eight eight six eight three five, my website is kbutts@baulincityga.com. The website is Baldwin County, Baldwin County G A dot com, uh, call me anytime. Uh, you know, I'm gonna give you the best advice I can give you, I'm gonna let you know if you wrong, I'm gonna let you know you're right, I'm gonna get your avenue, uh, how you can change it and make it better if you feel like you've been dead wrong. I work for the people, love the people, about the people, for the people, about the people, so.
That's right, that's right. All right, man, we thank y'all for tapping in with us, man, y'all have a wonderful, wonderful weekend and you already know, be great today, peace.